Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach Planning Commission this day, October nineteen, twenty twenty one. Carlos, would you like to lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
Absolutely. Let me just share. Everybody will stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands. Under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Carlos. And here we all are. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Seaman?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Commissioner Isaac?
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Here.
Chair Rice?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Carlos. We now move on to oral and written communications, and although the planning commission values your comments, the Brown Act generally prohibits the commission from acting on any matter not listed on listed agenda as a business item. This is the time for members of the public to address the planning commission on any items within the commission's jurisdiction, not on this agenda or on this agenda. Noting if you speak now and the item comes up later in our meeting, you will not given the opportunity to speak twice. Please note that the commission does not engage in a dialogue during public comment, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to unmute yourself. Participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute before starting your comment. We ask all speakers, please state your full name for the record. And with that, Carlos, do we have any hands raised online or any speaker?
Chair, we have one hand raised. Diana, I will allow you to address the commission.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
We can make it. Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm addressing number eight on the agenda for the developing project at ten twenty-two and ten twenty-four Seventeenth Street. So first point is the city planner says everything is in compliance with requirement for this R two B zone construction. But on the prime drawing of your construction, it clearly indicated the height of the two buildings exceed the maximum allowed height of thirty feet, which is on page six, seven, eight of their drawings. And also some of the critical height points actually mark their drawing is not high of the building. So I would like to have answer explanation of those two points. And also on the city website, there's a file named height requirements and calculating height, which clearly indicate all highest points of the building is under the maximum allowed height of thirty feet. So that's one area. Second area is the proposed construction actually set the side back from front yard, side yard and backyard to the minimum required. And then indicated based on the drawing, the two units have multiple balconies, which are all unenclosed. And then when they calculate the side back, they did not measure from the outside edge of the balcony while from the the side of the building. So which the building satisfied the five feet setback. But if you measure from outside the balcony, it's only leave you two to three feet setback. I guess we would like to have a clear definition of how the setback was measured for the finished building. And the next point is the, I think the land survey for the elevation point of the land. On the back corner of this lot, there's a huge tree, which a lot of root, which also elevated that corner of the lot, which is a critical point in the calculation of the the baseline. So we would like to have a little bit more details on how that elevation point was measured and determined and utilized in the calculation. Next point is according to our city, the maximum allowed lot coverage for any construction is sixty-five percent. I just want to clarify, that means thirty-five percent of the lot is uncovered by any structure they plan to build. That means they will leave thirty-five percent of an occupied land. Because now based on their proposal, all corners and and side, it was pushed to the minimum. So visually, I don't get how the thirty-five percent uncovered land will be left after construction. Last one is, next one is.
Diane?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is up.
Okay, so what do I do with? Okay.
Getting these cameras vaccinated card like right now is.
Carlos, do we, those are our speaker?
The time was up.
The time was up.
The time was up.
I'll do the call out. We did get a written communication on this matter from that caller. So you've spoken now, but the item is going to come up later. And so if there's someone else who could call in and finish your questions, as long as it's not Miss Shu, I think that that would be fine unless my colleagues object. So let's move on. Do we have any other hands raised for public comment noting that we are not, will address ten twenty-two, ten twenty-four Seventeenth Street later in the meeting? And it's generally better to listen to the staff report and commissioner questions before making some comments. So Carlos, go ahead. I see no hands raised. Let's do a call out then for anyone joining us by phone.
Anyone wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the agenda this evening and is calling in can press star nine to raise your hand. Chair not seeing any hands raised at this moment.
Okay, last call for public comment.
Seeing none.
Hearing none and seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission and move on to section one of our meeting. First item is our consent calendar, and we're looking at the approval of our September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission action minutes. But any, do any of my colleagues have any comments or do we have a motion to receive and file?
I will move to approve the September minutes.
I see. So we have a motion and a second. Steve, are you seconding that motion? You see them file?
Do we approve them or do we receive and file? I think we approve them, don't we?
Either way. Approval. Let's approve them.
Proven file.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any conversation? Hearing none. Carlos, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isaac?
Mute.
He is muted.
You're mute, Commissioner Isaac.
My apologies, yes.
And Chair Peterson?
Vice Chair Peterson, yes.
Oh, sorry. And Chair Rice?
Yes.
Mission carries.
Very well. Thanks. We have no resolutions for consideration tonight, so we move on to section two of our meeting, public hearings. First item is just informational reports, number seven, which are our public hearing notices, project zoning maps and mailing affidavits. So we will move right along to item number eight, con twenty-one dash three, PDP twenty-one dash three, VTPM eight three three seven oh, conditional use permit, precise development plan and tentative parcel map, number eight three three seven oh, for a two-unit detached condominium project, ten twenty-two, ten twenty-four Seventeenth Street, and determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Can we have a staff report, please?
Sure. The the subject lot is located in the R two B limited multifamily zone and located on the east portion of the city of the south side of Seventeenth Street between Pacific Coast Highway and Prospect Avenue. The properties to the northwest east of the subject lot are also zoned R two B, while properties to the south are located in the single-family residential zoning district. The subject site measures five thousand five hundred and eighty-nine point four square feet in lot area and is currently developed with two existing detached structures. And their access to buy a shared driveway on Seventeenth Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit and a precise development plan to construct two detached condominium structures of approximately thirty-five hundred square feet. The applicant proposes to maintain parking access from the existing shared curb cut on Seventeenth Street through a driveway on the northwest side of the lot. Since the project proposal will maintain the existing driveway access, the project will not impact the existing on-street parking space located in front of the subject lot. The proposed development has been evaluated for compliance with zoning slash code requirements, including building height, and it has been determined that the project will comply with all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance, including the R two B zone and design standards of the condominium section of Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, section seventeen point twenty-two. The project vesting tentative parcel map and condition, project investing parcel map as condition are consistent with the zoning code subdivision laws and other relevant provisions of the municipal code and the site physically is suitable for the type and density of the proposed development. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution approving the conditional use permit and precise development plan and vesting tentative parcel map H three three seven zero or a two-unit detached condominium project at ten twenty-two and ten twenty-four Seventeenth Street and determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff has received four e-commerce for this project. All three, excuse me, all four comments have included questions and concerns regarding the proposed building height. And I just wanted to give a little information on building height. Building height in the city of Hermosa Beach is defined as a vertical distance measured from grade. Grade is any point of the lot of, on a lot is determined based on the existing corner point elevations, taking into consideration significant variations relevant to the addition of properties. Staff has also attached to the calculations for the proposed building height as a supplemental document for additional information regarding the proposed building height. And I also wanted to note, because there were some concerns regarding future mechanical equipment that could be placed on top of the roof. And I just wanted to assure the commission and others that mechanical equipment is, has to comply with the maximum thirty-foot height limit. And in in the future, if in either one of the units decided to propose anything like an AC unit, for example, we, the the community development department would require a roof plan and a height verification in order to verify that that proposed AC unit is is compliant with the thirty-foot height limit. The applicant and I are available to answer any additional questions the commission may have and any other questions that I left unanswered. Thank you.
Thank you, Uritsey. Do any of my colleagues have questions for staff on this item at this time? Commissioner Isaac?
Thank you, Chair Rice. You're rich. Just for my own clarification, on page six of the drawings, the upper half of the drawing on the right-hand side, I see CP number one, CP number two, CP number four. I can translate those over to the, you know, the elevation study that staff did. However, looking at the the dotted line of the thirty-foot height, it appears that that corner of the house is above the thirty-foot average. Can you explain? Can you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So then that that specific height line is going to be directly at the property line. So that height line can vary depending on the lots, and we use the four property corners to determine the the spot elevation or the grade at any specific point on the lot. So that line that you're seeing is directly on the property line. However, the building is setback. So that height line may, while it might appear as the building is higher, it actually is compliant based off of the critical points. It's just because that maximum height is at the property line and the building is setback, it has the illusion to create the the effect that it is higher. But that's why we use the critical points to determine what that exact spot elevation would be for the maximum height, and then we compare it to the proposed height.
So I don't, just to further clarification, and then this is my last question. So that's on the the west elevation. So if the east elevation, that critical point, let's call it the southeast point, is higher than the than the than the southwest side, then what you're saying is that that really does not protrude or break the plane.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isaac. Do any of my colleagues have a question? Commissioner Seaman?
Yes, thank you. Not so much a question, but first of all, I'd like to thank you, Ritzy and the staff for this report. And I appreciate the fact that the drawings sometimes are confusing to people who have or who are not developers or contractors, because they, it's the drawings do make it appear that some critical points are above the line, just as you just explained. And I think some months ago, we went through some procedures to make it simpler to pull permits and go through the process. And and at that time, the staff came up with some drawings that were examples. I think most of it was sort of geared toward convex lots, how to explain the height limit versus convex lots and and why it appears that they, some person or another may be getting an advantage, but they're really not. We're still complying with the thirty-foot height limit. And I think this case is something very similar. And and the architectural drawings and pages six, seven and eight do, can be confusing. And they and they do show those points. And the way you explained it just now is, well, it's perfectly clear to me, but it might not be perfectly clear to everybody. And I don't think we have any drawings like that, like we did for critical points for this particular situation. But essentially, as you pointed out, the the height limit is from the four corners, which are all different. So not only does the lot slope forward, but it also slopes sideways. And so at one corner of the building, it may be well under the thirty-foot height limit, but appear to be over on the other corner. And and that's where the confusion comes from. And other than a three D drawing, I don't think there's any real way to to show that. But I wanted to thank you for your explanation, and I and I, I think this was a difficult presentation without some confusion anyway, at any point. But I think you did a very admirable job, and I wanted to thank you for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions at this time for staff? Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, thank you to staff for your work on this. I'm, I, when I first saw this item, I thought this would be sort of a quick one. We've often approved these as they meet all the standards. I appreciate the questions from citizens, and I hope that we're doing a good job. I think we are to explain them. If I look at drawing A eight, I mean, A six, there's a degree of sort of, you know, three D or perspective to it. If I look at A eight, it does appear to, everything is under the slope line. The second question I had, because I had heard the comment specific to HVAC systems on the roof or H or similar. So what you're saying is those would have to be under the thirty feet. Because I think, don't we, in some instances, if someone has elements that are on the roof that are less than, I'm going to say ten percent of the footprint, that those can be above thirty feet? I thought that was going to be your answer, but I just wanted to clarify that. Or is that for commercial?
Yeah, yeah. So that's correct, Commissioner. That is for the commercial designated designated zones. However, in the residential, we do not have that exception. So the HVACs would have to comply with the thirty-foot height limit.
Okay. I believe that concludes my questions at this time. Again, I appreciate citizens' questions. Hopefully, we've, you know, fairly applied everything and and explained it. I know that we have, but explained it in ways that make sense. So I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? None. Uritsey, if you could address a couple of the comments that we heard in our, from our speaker earlier in meeting. You did a great job of answering most of those. I think the only things that were not addressed at this point were about the setbacks from balconies and the lot coverage, because I think there's a misunderstanding there. So if you could take us through that really quickly.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was trying to remember all of the comments. Those were definitely the ones I did not touch on. So for the setbacks, the building does, we do have building setbacks, front yard, rear yard, and also side yard setbacks. We do, however, have a section in the code. I can't remember it on the top of my head, but it allows for certain yard encroachments. So certain things that meet the, you know, the requirements of our code can encroach into those front yard setbacks. One of those being is uncovered balconies. So while they have the the front yard balcony projecting, it just has to be three feet from the front property line. So they are compliant in that aspect, because they do, the main building does, is setback five feet, which is the requirement. And also the front yard balcony is only encroaching two feet into the required front yard and setback a minimum of the three feet that is required per code. In regards to the the lot coverage, so for the R two B, we have a lot, maximum lot coverage of sixty-five percent. And they have, the applicant has provided a calculation that has been verified by staff on page A seven of the drawing set. And he's provided all of the dimensions for the areas that would be counted towards the lot coverage. And we do have a definition in our municipal code that clearly states what and what isn't counted towards law coverage. For example, balconies that project less than five feet from the floor below, those would not be counted towards lot coverage. And in in this case, I don't believe he has any, but he meets all of those and everything that meets them in the definitions for lot coverage are counted. So the the footprint of the building is no more than sixty-five percent.
Very well. Thank you, Uritsey. I'll ask my colleagues one more time. Any questions for staff at this time? Any disclosures anybody would like to make, something that you've seen or heard that may impact your decision that we would not be aware of as a public or as your colleagues, because it was not included in the report? Commissioner Seaman?
I'm not sure would make any impact on anything, but I did have a brief phone conversation with Bob Rollins today. And I asked him about the equipment on the roofs and what is or isn't allowed. And other than that, he just quoted me what the code was, which I was pretty familiar with, but just wasn't positive. It's difficult to keep up with everything. He did point out to me that solar panels are allowed to exceed the thirty-foot height limit in some instances, if it's done in the proper way. And of course, chimneys and so on are are not. And air conditioning units and heating units and that sort of thing are not allowed either. But other than that, no, there was no other news or further indication of anything different.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none? We will, I'll go ahead now and open public comment for this item. Please note, the commission does not engage in a dialogue during public comment, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six in order to unmute yourself. Participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute before starting your comment. We ask all speakers to please state your full name for the record. Carlos, let's go ahead. Very well. I see a couple of hands raised.
Yeah, it would be appropriate to invite the applicant to speak first on the matter.
How is the applicant? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Do we have the applicant?
Let me go ahead and lower the hands, and then we will have a request that the applicant only raise her hand first, and then we will give the opportunity to the public to address the commission.
I apologize. I didn't see that. And raise. Very well. Thank you, Carlos.
So if I could kindly ask the applicant to raise their hand or press star nine if they're calling in. Once more, could the applicant please raise their hand or star nine if they're calling in? Okay, here we go. Hello, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're welcome to address the commission.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that staff report was done very efficiently and did a great job. I think you, Ritzy, did a great job on writing up the staff report. And I am familiar with the letters that were sent, email communications. So if you have any questions, you can ask me directly.
And we'll ask you to state your name and relationship to the project, please.
Yeah, my name is Emmanuel George. I'm with Plinth Design Group. And I'm the one that prepared the drawings. I am Plinth Design Group. Can you see me, by the way?
No, your camera's off, I believe.
Okay, do you need to see me? Would you like to?
We're just fine, unless you prefer to be on camera or we.
No, I'm okay. It's it's okay. If you're fine, I'm fine.
Colleagues, any questions for Emmanuel George of Plinth Design about this project? Seeing no affirmative head shakes. Very well, Carlos, shall we then go ahead and move on to our other public commenters?
Yes, this is the time the attendees can raise their hands, and we will call on you individually. First up, we have Dennis O'Reilly. Dennis, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Dennis O'Reilly. I live at one thousand five Sixteenth Street from Hermosa Beach, which is the lot directly behind the proposed construction. I have a garage, a detached garage in the back. And a, there's also a wall in the black, in the back. The cinder block wall has been cracked by the tree, the rubber tree in the back. And right now, my garage is is part of the partition between the lots. So I'm kind of wanting to know about what kind of separation I'm going to have to the back of my garage. Will I be able to maintain it? And what type of height wall will be between the lots? That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. We'll go through the rest of public comment, closed public comment, and then come back and see if we can't get some answers to those questions. Thank you. Carlos, can you call our next speaker, please?
Yes, our next speaker, Tori Loines. Tori, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I assume you can hear me. It's Tori Lyons, actually. Yes. So I think the concern that that many people here have here, this would actually not be typical in fitting with the neighborhood in that it is maybe fifty percent larger than some of the nearby condominiums. It's built up to the extreme limit, and in many cases, about a hundredth of an inch less than the height limit. And it's a very strangely shaped lot with slopes in two directions. So a, you know, an inch difference in the in the surveyed results for what the corners are, one of which, as we indicated, is completely covered with a a giant rubber tree makes a significant difference to the exact size this thing can be built to. I I know we did address the overhang of the the balconies in the front, but the same thing is happening in the back. The balconies in the back will only have a three-foot separation between the people and the the rest of the the there. So there really is no space. There's a four-foot space on both sides, which I guess is typical. But we're sort of concerned both about the the quality of the survey, since the critical points are determined, you know, with a hundredth of an inch accuracy. You know, with a hundredth of an inch accuracy, uh, the size of the things being built to, obviously they're being built to the absolute maximum. It'll fit within the zoning for this particular lot, which is again, not typical for the other similar condos in this area, which are built, built a little bit more modestly. And, uh, and, uh, yeah, those are the two things. Guess I'll stop my comments now.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Carlos, I see we have a caller ending in eight zero zero eight.
Yes, next up, I will give permission to address the commission for the phone number ending in zero zero eight. If you could hit, press star six to unmute yourself. Hi, welcome. I think we lost them. You're not seeing the caller. It looks like it may have dropped.
Okay, do we have anyone calling in by phone? Anyone on the line caring to comment on this item? Now is the time to do so. Star nine and star six and state your name. I see a hand raised, Carlos.
Uh, yes, Chair, we have Diana Shu again. She's raising her hand.
Well, I also see Christina.
Christina, yeah, so we'll. Christina, perfect. Hi, Christina, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much. Yeah, so again, I, I completely agree with, uh, with Tori and Diane. I think what our worry is the extreme size of, of, uh, of the development. And also I know that the height says that it's thirty feet somewhere and less than thirty feet somewhere else. Um, which is showing on the drawing. So if the drawing is not correct, then can we maybe have a drawing that is in fact correct? Um, I, we also, we were discussing that, um. Hold on, I lost my train of. That, uh. The concerns about the building also being the largest in the R two B zone in the seventeenth street. And Prospect Avenue neighborhood. And also that it will block and reduce airflow, sunlight view and create, uh, characterization in the area. Um, so again, you know, we have the two. Uh, buildings on the same size lot, which is very much more moderate, if you will, than this lot. On this, uh, building. Um, so I think that's just basically our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have one more caller who has not spoken before and that I see ending in three, seven, five, three, Carlos.
Yes, I will allow, uh, phone number ending in seven, five, three to address the commission. Reminder to press star six to unmute yourself. Welcome. Caller ending in seven, five, three. Can you hear us? Caller ending in seven, five, three. Can you hear us?
There we go. It's off mute now. Or she, is that person there? Star nine, or I'm sorry, star six to unmute. Go ahead, caller.
Caller, if you could press star six one more time to try to unmute yourself and address the commission. Welcome, can you hear us?
I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Please state your name. Sure, state your name. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Sean Gabigan. I live adjacent to the property. A question was mentioned regarding solar panels on the roof. Um, I have a roof deck as well, and how would that impede just, I'm worried about the glare. Just, I mean, would those be kind of situated where? It wouldn't really infringe upon just a, a glare, you know, if I was on the roof deck? That's my question.
Very well, Sean, we will, uh, go through public comment and then we will come back and ask some questions about, uh. Solar panels if they are proposed for this project. Um, what we don't engage in a, a question and answer during public comment, we just take your comments and your questions and we address them after. Okay, I think that is it for all those folks who we had not heard from on this item. Okay, uh, nope. Carlos, I see one more hand raised here. Mel- Melanie?
Hello, Melanie, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, like Sean, um, I am a neighbor attached to where the property is being built. And I just wanted to find out if. Given some of the variables with the thirty foot height at different points and levels within the, the property. Would it be possible to ask for story polls to be present so we can? Kind of assess what that looks like from a neighborhood perspective and then also make sure that that's. Aligned with the areas, um, impeding on kind of the back of the lot as well as the side lots.
Melanie, we heard your question and we can address it after we close public comment. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about the project or any other questions?
No, I think all my other questions and comments have been addressed by my neighbors as well.
Okay, Melanie, Melanie, could you just give us your last name for the record?
Sure, it's Hashmi, H A S H M I.
J S A M I. Very well, thank you so much. Okay. Alrighty, Carlos, I see no other speakers who have not already commented on this item. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this item and bring it back to the commission. We did have a number of questions, um, about the project. And so I would like to, unless one of my colleagues wants, wants to start. Could we have, um, staff maybe address some and then if we have to bring. The applicant back, Mr. George, I believe, from Plinth. I, I think that we can do that. Um, Yuritzi, can we talk then again? Um, let's start with our first speaker. Um, there was a question about a, a wall of a garage that is also part of the, uh. Wall at the back of the property. There's a rubber tree. Either on the wall or cracking the wall or imposing on that wall. And he had some questions about what the separation of lots would be like if, and if that wall was coming down. So that would be the first set of questions that I captured.
Yes, so let me just pull up the plans. One second. All right, so they are proposing, um, what looks like to be. It looks like it might be the existing wall that's going to remain. So this might be a better question for the, um, architect or designer. To clarify, uh, the plans do show that it's an existing adjacent property wall to remain. Um, so whether there's going to be, um, any type of improvements that, especially if there's some eroding from the, um. Roots of the tree, then that's something that maybe that the architect could address. Um, regarding the rear yard setback, um, so I do want to state, so it is from the property line to the building wall that it's measured. Um, and regarding, because we did have a lot of comments, um, regarding, um, the, the, um, cantilever of the balconies. And I do want to note for the record, um, I just realized this now on page three of the staff report under the. Basic zoning standards under rear yard setback, um, I have listed the first floor, uh, setback for the rear. However, I missed the, the, um, second and third floors. So in the R two B, you're allowed to cantilever. And the rear yard on the, of any floor above the first is actually three feet. So they are compliant with that three foot, um, rear yard setback. So there is two different distinct setbacks for the reared specifically. So it's the, um. On the ground floor, it's five feet and then any floor above that, it's three feet. So I just want to clarify that. And that was on page three of the staff report. So. I do want to note that, um, the, the title that I missed. Um, and I think that addresses both of those questions. Um, but yes, I believe the architect or designer can. Well, address the, the wall issue.
Okay, well, let's, uh, go through, uh, the rest of the questions and then we'll, uh, go to, um, the designer. If there's anything that you can answer or that he would like to also comment on as well. Um, a comment about, let's see, it's not a typical development in the neighborhood. Um, there was a comment about the extreme size and height. Um, there was a comment, uh, let, let's keep it to there. So the size of the project. Um, relative than to the ne- the rest of the neighborhood.
Gotcha. When I was surveying the lot, um, there are different developments and then just keeping in mind that. We do have R one really adjacent, really close to the property. So while in this specific neighborhood. It is zoned for multiple family. Um, it may seem that the other budding neighborhood or the other budding, um. Properties might seem smaller, but that's because they are, are one. Um, and there are a lot of properties that are a little older. So they can have just different, um, they propose just different, uh, square footages for the house. So that was my only survey of the lot.
Okay, and let's see, uh. I have, we have a solar panel question, so leave that to the designer. And then there's a, a question, maybe this is better for Ken. Um, there was a call for. Story polls, which I don't, I know that we don't require in Hermosa Beach. Um, so I. Like to get that information for, uh, that commenter about.
Yeah, yes, Chair. Chair, I have a couple comments. I'm not, yeah. In regards to the property line wall, the neighbor with a tree, I strongly recommend that that neighbor reach out to the project architect and builder. Um, usually that's, uh, those are good things to discuss in advance of the construction. Um, we also coordinate what we call a pre-demolition meeting before construction starts. Strongly recommend that neighbor, um, show up at the meeting because our building inspector will be there as kind of a mediator to any discussions about. You know, the phases of construction and dealing with those kind of issues. So that's, that's often the best way to deal with those issues. Um, and regarding the story polls, um. You know, living in the city of Torrance and having worked in the city of Torrance, I'm familiar with those, but the whole reason for those in. Cities like Torrance where they have districts with view protection ordinances. It's for the adjacent properties to get a perspective. And then there's some discretion on the part of the decision makers to modify the project to protect views. I think as you all know, there's no view protection ordinance. So. I can't see any value whatsoever in having a silhouette or story polls when there's no. Discussion about adjusting it. And related to that, I would also say that. The precision we use in verifying height calculations is, is very careful. We require the surveyor verification, um, at framing stages. Um, before they like put, put on the roof sheathing and stuff like that. And if they get out ahead of themselves and make a mistake, we have them fix that. So. It's, um, it's a very, um, careful, precise process that we use during construction and during inspection. With the developer and the surveyor to ensure compliance with the plans.
Okay. Very well, uh, let's see. Thank you, Ken, for that.
Adam, Chair, if I could, as you're, to, to follow up on, on, uh, the director's comment. The other part of that, which is not an issue for us, but we should be aware of it. It's very expensive to do story polls that make sense because they have to be surveyed effectively. Otherwise. I can take a thirty foot pole and stick it up there in the air, but until someone actually dumps and shoots that. Uh, it becomes, it, it serves no useful purpose. And as Ken says, the purpose, and I've worked in some other cities on this. It's about views, not simply to give the neighbors a sense of what's coming. So it's, it's a, but it's, it's not a casual thing that we would just, oh yeah, let's just do it. As a courtesy unless somebody wanted to do it. It's a very expensive proposition.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. I think the last questions are, um, best directed to our applicant. So, um, if we have Mr. Really, his name is Mr. George from Plinth. Still on the line, if we could bring him back on and ask Mr. City Attorney, if I have this right, do I have to reopen public comment? To, to.
Applicant? No, no, that, that, that's fine. Uh, I would advise you, should the applicant begin to advocate or. Uh, you know, go away from the question to interrupt him or her.
Okay, so we'll stick very closely to, uh, answer the questions from the callers that we had earlier. Carlos, if you had, go ahead, uh, and, um, ask, oh, I see the hand raised. Very well.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. George, for, for rejoining us. So the, the narrow scope of, uh, questions that we'd like to. To ask you and have you provide answers on, um, if you could do any clarification about that wall that abuts fifteen, sixteen, sixteenth street. Um, that our first caller talked about. Um, and there was also, uh, another commenter. Um, an adjacent neighbor had a question about solar panels, and I think that's, may have been related to a comment with that, uh, one of my colleagues made earlier. About solar panels. Um, so if you could just answer those, those two questions for us.
Yeah, certainly. Um, as far as the adjacent property to the south of us and their existing garage and our proposed wall. Um, we're not sure exactly where the finished surface of that exterior wall would be of his garage, the northerly portion of that. Um, after we get in there and demo the properties and, and are able to kind of vacate the areas adjacent to these. Um, in this case, this, this particular wall, what we'll do is, um, obviously we don't want to do any kind of damage to the existing structure there whatsoever, which is including the footing. Their footing may be on our property line. Um, that's something we're more than willing to address and offset the wall a little bit. Um, on more on our property versus being the south face of our wall directly on. His property line or which is, you know, the common property line in that area. So that's something that we'll be more than willing to address. Uh, through the construction before we really get too far. Um, we have no intention of bothering this, this, um, adjacent neighbor's garage whatsoever. But we will have to, just to accommodate our grades, we're raising our grade about a foot, I think, back there along that wall. So we will in fact have to have. Um, a new property line wall as it is a requirement for our project. Um, as far as the solar panels, I guess, uh, the new energy code requires us to provide twenty-five percent of. Our energy, annual energy usage via this new system, you know, the solar panels and. We are now being required as, um, these new projects come to, uh, provide this. And we do this via solar panels. The panels are not very large in size. They would probably encompass about the size of about two thirds of a two car garage floor. For each unit, for a unit this size. And then we do make provisions to put them as low as we can on the roof. Um, they will be sloped as far as the angle goes. I've. I've never really had anybody concerned about the reflection of those off the panel. Um, it's certainly a valid concern. Um, I've never personally dealt with it directly. Um, I'd like to think that there are some type of a covering that we could put on these solar panels. That the manufacturer is probably more than familiar with this kind of a, of a concern relative to the new solar panel construction. And we'd be more than willing to certainly kind of go down that road and investigate that for the adjacent neighbors. I'm not sure where they were. Um, that may help just in determining, you know, location of these panels and the concerns that they might have if we could get. Um, some type of a, an idea. Um, maybe they could meet us for this, uh, pre-job meeting and we could discuss all these issues at that time.
Very well. Thank, thank you, Mr. George, for answering those questions. Unless my colleagues have any other questions. I'd like to bring it back to the commission. Any questions? Oh, sorry, Vice Chair Peterson.
Well, there was a, there was a comment made by, um, the last speaker specific to. Building up a corner for the wall. I, I just wanted to verify, I'm asking this on behalf of the neighbors, that that's. Anything that they're doing in terms of that grading is not impacting the original calculation of the property corners. That's for the facilitation of the building, correct?
Uh, is that question directed to me?
Either you or Yuritzi. Building one of the corners up a foot, and I don't think that doesn't factor in anyway.
Um, I think I can answer that. Typically, when the surveyor comes out and surveys these points. I know he makes a diligent effort to get these precisely on the property corners. Sometimes there are existing elements there, walls, portions of buildings, trees, possibly roots or what have you. And we make an extreme effort to try and monument that corner and get a precise elevation on it. I don't think this tree is, is in a, uh, has the proximity in that corner where it's going to actually affect the, the natural grade elevation. Because technically, that's what we are supposed to be measuring there is, is the existing grades at the property corners. And that's what we use to base our height calculations on. So that tree will, in fact, as the, as the project moves forward, that tree will, in fact, go away. But that in no fact, in, in no way is going to kind of change our natural grade elevations, the calculations and the information that we provide to the city. Did I answer your question?
That answered my question. And then I, Chair, I'm not sure if I, if I can also ask a question of staff. But the, you know, those of us who are lucky enough to be here, you know, at least twelve nights a year, know some of the nuances between R one, R two, R two B. Can a staff member, Uritzi, or Ken explain the nuance between R two and R two B? And what specifically that means for that lot, for that development?
Yeah, so the R two B allows for multiple units. You have to have seven seventeen fifty square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. Whereas the limited multifamily has that same requirement, however, it's maxed out at two units. So they wouldn't be able, in this case, I believe they're even large enough to accommodate more units. But specifically to the R two B, they're maxed out at two. So even if they have the larger lot, which they do, they can only provide two units. And then I did see a comment mentioning about the R two B. So I just wanted to clarify. The R two B, they were asking about the step back requirements for the, um, the rear. And they were asking about where that is in our, on our municipal code. So it's in chapter seventeen point fourteen point oh two zero development standards D. And it talks about the rear yard and it being five feet on, and in depth on the ground floor and three, three feet on any floor above. So I just wanted to provide that code section for them.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, I think that finishes our questions for the designer. I see he has now left our Zoom room. So colleagues who would like us to kick off deliberations. Commissioner Seaman, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rice. So quite often when we see these condominium projects come by, we, uh, someone invariably makes a statement that it meets all the requirements and there's no reason that it says pretty much a, I wouldn't say rubber stamp, but it's, it meets all the requirements and there's no reason to deny this project. And, and that's the case here, although at first look, it seems like it's much larger than other ones and it must be too close and it must be too high and so on. And I appreciate those folks who wrote in and spoke here this evening about those different parts of the project that they, that, that do seem to be different than what the requirements are. However, as I go down this list of criteria and what's required and what's proposed, this project does meet all of the requirements in, in every way, including the height limit. Whether or not it's obvious to the casual observer, it, it does do that. Earlier this evening, I think it was the architect that mentioned that these surveys are done sometimes to the hundredth of an inch. They're actually, I think, always done to the hundredth of an inch. That is such a tiny minute delineation of, of space. It just goes to show you how important it is and how precise the surveys are. And that how we must rely on those surveys with everything. An architect will spend a lot of time and effort to design the building to come within that hundredth of an inch. And so for the survey to be wrong, uh, it would be a tragic thing. And I, I don't think it's, I can't remember it ever happening in the city. And because the surveyors are very well trained and they, they have a license. And it's, it's critical to their business to, to be that accurate, to be accurate to the hundredth of an inch. And so everything is based on that. And as Ken, I think, mentioned earlier, at some point, right after at framing inspection, before any covering is put on the building, uh, I believe the engineer who drew the original plans has to come out and certify that everything is the way it was supposed to be. And that the surveyor has to come back and, and then resurvey, uh, especially the height limits to make sure that they built it to the, according to the heights that was on the original survey. So it's very well checked and very well precisely drawn and precisely built. There isn't any, well, it's a little over, so we're gonna let it go. That, that just doesn't happen in this, in these cases. So as I look down here, I see everything that, that it does indeed meet all the requirements. And I think it's a, it's a good project. And I think that I like especially, although we, we are not a archery here. We're just planning commissioners and we look at kind of the nuts and bolts of it rather than what the building looks like. I think it's a nice design and the fact that it has protruding balconies and pop outs and recessed areas. And there's quite a bit of interest in the building, rather than building sort of a semi-flat, sort of a shoebox type thing. This is certainly not that at all. It's, it's a very well grown building. I also like the fact that they are using the existing single driveway to park both units. To get to the parking on both units, which does preserve street parking. I know the neighbors sometimes seem to be upset about one aspect or another of, of a project like this. But this designer chose to use that single driveway for two units arrangement, which preserves the on-street parking. It, it, they do have the right, if they wanted to, to put a two, two-car driveway and, or more. And that would take away some space, but it would require them to replace the space, but it's not quite the same thing. So I, I think it's, it's important to note that, that they have been sensitive to the neighborhood by keeping the existing parking on the street available to the neighbors. And that they have met all the requirements and have drawn a, a very nice building in addition to that. So I, I plan to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hoffman.
I'm, you've caught me a little flat footed. I think Rob had my script, as it were. I'm looking at my own notes and going almost to bullet points. And it's interesting, Dave did mention at the beginning of this, that inevitably somebody says this is a completely conforming project. It is. The only other comment I would make in addition to what Rob mentioned is that we, this is inevitable. That as we have seen property values in our community go up, that people are going to build now to the maximum. We're gonna reach what they used to call zoning saturation. But there, you know, there are condos and apartments and so forth in the city throughout it, including that neighborhood that were built to an earlier economic model, not to a different zoning model, but a different economic model. Now that doesn't make financial sense for developers and people are going to insist on building to the max. But, and that's what this is. It's not over, it's not excessive, it's, it's nothing. It may be new to that neighborhood or to that particular block in that particular neighborhood. But it's happening throughout the city, including six feet from where I'm sitting in a house that's built to less than twelve feet in height. That's, that's just inevitable and I will also be supporting the project.
Very well. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eisen.
Thank you, Chair Rice. I would echo what my two fellow commissioners have already pointed out and I intend to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, um, yeah, I, obviously, we, we tend to be in agreement on some of the reasons why or why not we support projects. Were noted, in this case, it does meet, I think we've demonstrated two things. Number one, that we do, you know, support based on the comments, projects that meet all the requirements. We discuss these requirements and the procedures for, you know, surveying, you know, the property and all of that, long before any particular project is ahead of us. That's the zoning and the code and the very details that we go through. And then equally apply that to all property within that zoning. And so we've done that. We also demonstrated last week, or last month, rather. And of course, you know, many of you weren't here, but for those of us that are commissioners, the, um, you know, diligence and, um, you know, oversight that we applied to anyone that wishes to exceed height. This does not exceed height. Last month, someone did try to get a appeal for exceeding the height that was denied. So we do take that seriously. Then thirdly, we really do try to answer all of these questions. A lot of the issues that have been raised here before. You know, we're well versed in them, but that doesn't mean that citizens are. And so we do make a good faith effort to answer all the questions, define terms, talk about the specifics and even some of the minutia of property corners and height and all of that to the people. Though they may not like the decision or the vote, they understand the basis for it. And that their participation was, you know, warranted and appreciated. And hopefully, you know, our feedback to their participation provided some understanding of the process. So with that, as, as has been noted, it does meet the requirements and within the rights of the property owner, I do intend to support the project.
Very well. Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll just summarize, as my colleagues have stated, this project would not have come forward unless it met the basic zoning standards that would apply to this project. We do take all of the questions very seriously in the process. And that is why we took our time to go through all of the questions that we had in public comment, but also via email public comment. And so really what I'd like to say is this is absolutely the purpose of this hearing. These projects don't come forward to us unless they meet all the standards. So really what we're saying is that staff has come through thus, done the diligence and knows it meets it, all of the requirements. But we do this to bring it forward so that the neighborhood is noticed and so they know about this meeting. They understand the project and so that we can put together the project owner, developer and construction team. And so have those conversations early so you all as neighbors understand what is coming and hopefully start those dialogues early so unforeseen issues can be resolved. So I intend to support this project, echoing all of the comments that my colleagues have made specifically to preservation of the street space. So we're utilizing that driveway and then conforming in all the ways that we ask. This is a property right to develop. And as Commissioner Hoffman said, we are seeing this all over our city and in our own neighborhoods. So we, we understand what it, what it does feel like. My ask then, before we, I call for a motion would be that, um, Uritzi, if you could please reach out to the neighbors that wrote to us. So that would be Mr. O'Reilly, Ms. Shu, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Gavigan, and then neighbor, I believe she said her Hasmy, Melanie Hasmy. If you could please reach out and provide them with the contact information the project owner or the designer, so they know that they are on the list for that pre-construction meeting. And that especially in the case of Mr. O'Reilly at fifteen sixteen sixteenth street, his wall, he obviously has some concerns about that. And it seems like Mr. George at Plinth was more than willing to set up those conversations and meetings. So there could be resolution, understanding what was gonna happen on that portion of the lot. So with that, oh, I see, one zero zero five sixteenth street. Gosh, that chat function on the Zoom is really handy. Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. I apologize that I got that wrong. So with that, I'll go ahead and see if any of my colleagues would make, like to make a motion on this item. Commissioner Seaman, I saw your name first.
Thank you, Chair. I would move that we adopt the Resolution of Approving Conditional Use Permit twenty one dash three and Precise Development Plan twenty one dash three. And the tentative parcel map eight three three seven zero for this project.
Very well. Commissioner Hoffman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Hearing none. Carlos, will you please?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
The motion carries. The Resolution the Planning Commission adopted memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be in writing and submitted by six P M. on Monday, November eighth, two thousand twenty one, to the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Next up on our agenda tonight is a precise development plan, PDP nineteen dash two and Park Plan nineteen dash two. An amendment to extend the time to planning entitlement pursuant to section seventeen dash seventeen dash oh two oh of the municipal code to allow a six-unit motel project by constructing a new three-story detached two thousand seven hundred and forty-four square foot commercial building containing five units to be constructed behind the existing eighteen hundred and forty-one square foot single-family residence, which will be converted to an additional unit and a parking plan to allow the sixth space parking requirement to be met with four spaces on site, including one tandem space plus in lieu for two spaces on a four thousand two hundred, I apologize, four thousand twenty-three hundred square foot lot in the C two restricted commercial zoning district at seventy tenth street and determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. That was a mouthful. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The request in front of you is for a precise development plan and parking plan amendment to extend the time to planning entitlements pursuant to section seventeen point seventy point zero twenty. An application for the project was received by the city on March twenty first, two thousand nineteen, after conducting a duly notice public hearing to consider the project on October twenty second, two thousand nineteen. The city council approved precise development plan nineteen dash two and parking plan nineteen dash two, overturning the planning commission decision and approving the project with city council resolution number nineteen dash seventy-two seventeen. That item was attached for your reference. And on August seventeen, I'm sorry, August eighteenth, my apologies, twenty twenty-one of this year, the applicant submitted a written request to extend the planning entitlements by one year to October twenty second of two thousand twenty-two. The applicant cited the unusual, unusually prolonged coastal commission review as the primary reason for the delays which set them back and delayed overly, uh, delayed construction. The subject property is located within the coastal zone. And thus, a coastal development permit is required by the coastal commission in order to start demolition and start construction of the approved project. The planning division approved the project in concept on March twelfth of two thousand twenty. The approved coastal plans, however, were not received by the community development department until October seventh of this year. So about one year, a, a little over a year later. Thus, the long review process from the coastal commission has created an, an additional unforeseen hardship to the project and inability to initiate significant construction of the improvements prior to the entitlement's expire, expiration date. The extension would allow the applicant to move forward with the plan check review process in order to obtain building permits and start construction as soon as possible. For the reasons listed above, staff recommends that planning commission approve by minute order the request to extend the expiration date of October twenty second to two thousand twenty-one by one year to October twenty second of two thousand twenty-two. And that completes my presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Uritzi. And if I, if I might just go to our city attorney very quickly. Patrick, if you could address this item, if I'm understanding this correctly, and I think it was very well laid out, looking at the report and by Uritzi just now. The item before us is not approve or reapprove this project. The item is the extension of the planning entitlements. So noting that there was a split vote on this project last time, we are not required to vote the same way because we're not actually voting on the same item. Do I have that right?
That is entirely accurate, Chair Rice. As Uritzi put forward, kind of what's before you is whether there's, you know, good cause or reasons justification for the delay. You know, if the applicant acted, you know, in a dilatory fashion, something like that. But once again, what's not before you is either reapproval or redenial of the project. And so you kind of hit the nail right on the head, Chair Rice.
Okay, very well. I'm glad they did so. All right, uh, at this time, do any of my colleagues have questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, any disclosures to make? Seeing none. Okay. Carlos, do we have the applicant? Carlos, do we have the applicant and would he that would they like to address the commissioner?
Yes, Chair. I see Brandon Strauss. Welcome, Brandon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Chair Rice and Commissioners. I'm Brandon Strauss here on behalf of the applicant Dean Thomas. As Ms. Randall said, we are requesting an extension to the entitlement due to some unforeseen and unusual circumstances. The pandemic has generally slowed the process of obtaining government approvals, including a coastal development permit for this project. We spent eleven months working with the coastal commission staff to get their support for the project, followed then by the commission approval. Given the uncertainty inherent in the coastal review process, it is common for applicants to hold off starting structural and civil review with the city until after the coastal permit is granted. And that was the case here. After receiving coastal approval, we began the city plan check process. And we are on what we hope is the last round of review from the city structural consultant. Once we have city approval, the applicant intends to break ground as soon as possible. So with that said, we respectfully request your approval of the extension. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Carlos, do we have? I see that we have the property owner or manager. Did Brandon speak for him or would he also like to address the commission?
I have a hand raised from Dean. So we will allow Dean to address the commission. Dean, welcome. Reminder to unmute yourself.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yes, I want to let you know, I appreciate your consideration on this. We've given it diligent effort to work with all the entities involved. In fact, I had a Zoom conference updating Ken and Christie at the city to let them know where we were at with plan check. The architect had to make a couple of revisions because this has been a four year process of revision because they have changed codes a little bit, but nothing changed the exterior of the building. It's at here right now. We expect them to have hopefully the final approval in the next thirty days or sooner or maybe a couple of weeks after. But certainly we've made all effort we can to get this thing done so we can break ground. And then in addition to that, we're going to be start putting a new roof on the house in the next thirty days, reinforcing the foundations and getting the main house ready. So we haven't stopped on that process. So we can get the main house ready for usage while we're, you know, hopefully pulling a permit in the next two months to to begin the construction on the back. And I think that's about all I have to offer right now.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have questions for either Brandon or Dean? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment for this item. Please note, the commission does not engage in dialogue during public comment and each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six in order to unmute yourself. Participants joining by the internet, please remember to unmute yourself before starting your comment. We ask all speakers to please state your full name for the record. And with that, Carlos.
Yes, Chair. At the moment, not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. If we have anyone calling in and participating on the phone, now is the time to dial star nine and then star six. Doing.
Not seen any hands raised.
The one last call for public comment. Hearing and seeing none, let's bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Okay, who would like to kick us off? Commissioner Hoffman.
It's now I get to use Rob's script. This is a pretty routine request and given the situation certainly seems appropriate to me to continue the item in light of coastal and the delays that we all know occur at that stage in this process.
Very well. Any of our colleagues? Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, to the to your earlier questions and clarification by the city attorney, I mean, every every vote has a subject and a purpose and a context. And so when this originally came before us, I was challenged by the size of the project. And that was that vote. This vote is to decide whether Mr. Thomas at all have, you know, reasonably pursued the center entitled to some reasonable accommodation to extend the the permits. And I think that burden has been met. So I do intend to support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioner Seaman?
I see no reason not to extend the entitlements for another year. That's an unfortunate event with coastal commission and it's perfectly understandable.
Very well. Commissioner Isaac.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rice. I intend to support staff's recommendation.
Very well. So that's all of us. I too will be supporting this recommendation. A year at Coastal Commission is a long time to get approved. And I I know that those applications were put in and that this applicant did work diligently with the commission through, I think I saw several revisions when I looked at the coastal coastal commission documents on this. So I will also be supporting staff recommendation. Do we have then a motion on this item?
I'll move staff recommendation.
And Mr. Hoffman? Any further deliberation? Hearing none. Carlos, can you please call?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isaac?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
Chair Rice.
Moving on to our next item in this section of the meeting, we're looking at a text amendment. T X twenty one dash three to section seventeen point four oh point two three oh of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code regarding the city's short term vacation rental pilot program and determination the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The following staff item before you is a text amendment to extend the city's two year short term vacation rental pilot program for two additional years. Staff has also included amendments to the existing language to help clarify and clear up the existing requirements for short term vacation rentals. So that the ordinance is consistent with the upcoming zoning code update. The amendments to the ordinance were included as exhibit A of attachment one to this report. The text amendment was introduced at the September twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting during the September meeting Planning Commission recommended the staff prepare a text amendment to extend the city's two year short term vacation rental pilot program for two years with minor modification to the existing language as recommended by staff. The proposed changes can be found on page four of tonight's staff report. Amendments to the existing language were included and in the red line version of the exhibit of exhibit A of attachment one of this report. And pursuant to Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, section seventeen point forty point two three zero E, the two year pilot program is set to sunset on October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one, two years after implementation of the ordinance. The text amendment would extend the program for two additional years and would be would be set to sunset on October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. That concludes my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Yuritzi. Do any of my colleagues have questions for staff at this time? No hands raised. Oh, one hand, Vice Chair Peterson.
You know what? There were comments in the comments. One of the letters that was submitted, apologies, specific to, you know, enforcement and maybe that I know one of the concerns, including mine, when this was raised was at once there are some S T B Rs in the city, though, you know, legal that it it kind of opens the floodgate and makes it a little more difficult in terms of enforcement. Can can you all speak to from city staff in terms of our enforcement efforts, any sort of you know, color in terms of, you know, how this has impacted enforcement of S T V Rs and residential zones and our overall enforcement efforts? I'd appreciate some comments to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So in our last report, we did provide kind of a little overview of the code enforcement complaints that we had specific to the commercial, but we also include a residential. And overall, we found that we have more code enforcement complaints or issues regarding the residential or the use of short term vacation rentals in residential uses in residential zones, excuse me, that are prohibited in the city. And code enforcement staff is working diligently to improve efforts to try to improve enforcement. But I know that and maybe Ken, you might know, they they were setting a meeting to kind of improve the technology we're currently using to improve those efforts. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that, Ken.
No, thanks for that, Yuritzi. But in responding to kind of the general question, I I think it's two distinct things. We are perfectly capable of enforcing a legal short term vacation rental program in the commercial zones, separate and distinct from the program and the residential zones, or if you can call it a program, the prohibition in the residential zones. They are clearly two different districts. We know where the properties are. That said, we all know it's not easy to enforce these laws, but I've actually been pleasantly surprised by the success of the program with respect to advertising. Sure, there are still a lot of ads out there, but we try to deal with them as quickly as possible. And in most cases, we get compliance. There's always outstanding cases. It's not perfect by any means, but I think we've significantly diminished the impact of the illegal short term vacation rentals. And all that being said, I think two more years to study this and to see how this works will also benefit. You know, we'll have a chance to revisit this in two years. So the two year, giving an additional two years to evaluate how well it works. Given that we haven't really seen the full impact of the short term vacation rentals for probably a year and a half because of the pandemic.
Okay, I I appreciate their clarification. And again, just to note, we're you know, discussing how and whether we recommend this to the City Council for their ultimate approval. So it's not our approval to make, it's our recommendation and then their approval and action to make on this item. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Isaac.
Thank you, Chair Rice. Ken or Yuritzi? If I open up the Airbnb link in the letter from Scott Hayes, or he says there's about thirty short term rentals available. So I in the write up by staff, it was you respond to complaints. But do I understand directly now that there's a more proactive that you guys go on Airbnb and try and track these folks down or is did I understand that correctly? Or is it still you're responding mainly to complaints?
No, absolutely, Commissioner. We are very proactive in tracking the different sites that advertise short term vacation rentals. It's Airbnb, B R B O, there's others. There's other ways that people secure rentals. So it's like I said, it's a it's a challenge. I would there's no doubt about that. It's very hard to prove when we track them down. Another point I'd like to make is a lot of the Airbnb or B R B O people will put out on their ads that it's in Hermosa Beach. But it actually may not be. It might be nearby in Redondo or somewhere else. And so you can't necessarily rely on the those numbers. Someone might claim that they find thirty ads for Hermosa Beach. It could be that quite a few of those are not actually in Hermosa Beach. Anybody advertising this stuff wants to make their property sound more attractive. And they'll, you know, say whatever they want. And as you know, if you've ever shopped around in Airbnb, you don't know exactly where the property is until you start engaging with the renter or the Airbnb.
Thank you, Director. Just Chair Rice, just one, if you indulge me in one comment, I did dive into some of these thirty ads. There's one called Oceanfront Free Bedroom Luxury Suite Steps From Sand. If you open that up, it says entire rental unit hosted by April and Dan. What caught my attention, though, was at the last commission meeting, the commission supported my suggestion that we direct staff to look into this new phenomenon called fractional ownership, which primarily, at least as it's advertised by that one company, you know, eight people own a fraction of a house. I wonder, though, if this is a fig leaf. What they have there is this property, I'm quoting now, this property operates in compliance with local and state laws. It's not a timeshare. This is shared ownership. The governing document is called an operating agreement that sets out the responsibilities of each owner member. When you schedule the use of the property prior to the use of the property, you must be assigned a membership slash ownership interest in the property through the L L C. Thus, you'll become a member of the L L C with the right to use the property. So I don't know whether this is a fig leaf trying to disguise just an old fashioned Airbnb short term rental or whether this is some sort of bastardization of this fractional ownership. And with that, I conclude my comments.
Ken, is there any way to have, are we still working with host compliance on the technology side or?
Yes, as Yuritzi alluded to, we're working closely with them to again, keep up with this as much as we can. But there's always technology has ways of gaming the system. So it's it's going to be an ongoing challenge. I don't I don't think we can understate that, but.
Well, I mean, I think I think in this particular instance, Commissioner Isaac brought up an interesting new twist. And if we could look have that work, I highly recommend it. I'm sure council will be watching the meeting. They had a split decision on this as well. So I think anything we can do to inform as they look at it would be quite helpful to their decision making process. So thank you, Commissioner Isaac, for those questions. Commissioner Seaman?
Yes. First, I'd like to preface my comment or actually question to Ken by saying that I think code enforcement is doing as good a job as they can under the circumstances. But my question was this, are they looking seeking employment of another code enforcement officer who might be assigned to just this one thing, at least on a part time basis, so that almost daily, they could go through all of these ads, chase down the ones that actually are in Hermosa Beach and that are illegal. And then notice those folks that that were aware of what you're doing and you need to stop immediately and so on and so forth. I mean, I I realize it's difficult to do period. But would more manpower be a help to that?
The way we're dealing with it now is using this outside contract service to support our code enforcement staff. It also spends a lot of time on it, but we have not discussed adding another code enforcement staff person just for this issue. That would be a budget decision, something that, you know, between the City Council and the City Manager.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, so I think unless anybody else has a question, I think we've gone. Pete, did you have a question on this for staff before we open it? Okay. One quick question. So what we're looking at is the managed part, which is it's a finite list of addresses where we have a legal nonconforming residents in the commercial zone that sort of by code is allowed to have this kind of activity, but that we've sort of put rules around so that we are limiting the impacts to quality of life. So we've put this S T V R pilot program in place. We have inspections that happen. We have certain requirements about the type of rooms, the number of rooms, the number of people and parking. And so we literally have a list of what these addresses should be. So one of the one of our single commenter by a letter, Mr. Hayes wrote that he thinks we should just make it simple and just eliminate all short term vacation rentals in the city. So it's clear that none of this is allowed and it would be easier to get compliance online. And so given that we know we have six, was it six permits existing, we pretty much know what those addresses are and what those properties are. Do you in fact think that it's Do you in fact think that it's difficult to easily recognize a out-of-compliance STBR, if not by number of days offered, just simply by what it looks like in the address, which by the way, you can find if you scroll down in map, you can generally get there. And our city is so small, I actually recognize quite a few of the properties myself. But do you have any comment about that? About the way to manage the non-permitted uses versus what we're looking at tonight, which is the permitted use?
I don't know if I understand your, I thought I answered that question in the sense that I think we're fully capable of distinguishing the areas where they're permissible. And that's what the two-year program is going to help us do is monitor if that program is successful in terms of managing impacts.
Right. So I guess what I was trying to say is, we have a finite number that are actually
Yes.
pretty easy to see which are conforming and which are out of conformance, either by fact they have no license and they could have one, or they shouldn't be having this activity, and it's obvious by the location within one of our residential zones.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And how long is our contract with post-compliance?
We have another year on that contract, and so we'll be monitoring, you know, the quality of that service over that, over the following year.
Okay. Alrighty, I think that concludes my questions at this time, unless you might call, Commissioner Seaman. You're on mute, Rob.
I apologize. I don't mean to drag this on much further, but it did, we are discussing this enforcement business and the difference between acceptable compliant Airbnbs and those that are not and illegal. And just as a thought that occurred to me just now, would it be advisable or possible to, to give some sort of a certificate of compliance to those Airbnbs that are in our city that are approved, or a certificate of approval or something that, that needs to appear in their ad? So that when they put a, an ad in the paper that there's an Airbnb in Hermosa, and it's this and that, the other thing, somewhere in the ad it could say Hermosa, City Hermosa Approved Airbnb. And then everyone that does not have that in there, or does not have a particular number or something, that there, that that makes it obvious that they're, they're not one of the approved units. In, in a sort of a different context, I sometimes look in the ads in the beach reporter or whatever newspaper for a contractor that does one thing or another. Let's say I'm looking for a plasterer. They are required to put, by state law, they are required to put their license number in the ad. When they say Joe's Plastering, it says license number, blah, blah, blah. And then that would indicate that they have insurance, also workman's comp and so on and so forth. So you know that you are assured that the person you're doing business with is a licensed contractor. Something like that could be easily done for, in this program, in the two-year program, that if you, if you comply with all the requirements and you get your okay, and you are indeed a certified short-term rental in the city of Hermosa Beach, that you have some sort of symbol or a number or a license number or something that you should put in your ad, or you're required to have in your ad. And then people will be assured that they're getting the, what they're, who they're dealing with and what they're dealing with. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, thanks for that. You know, Uritzi, I don't, it seems like we have some very carefully written language in the code that might address that already, but I just don't know off the top of my head.
Not, not regarding like the actual ad itself, but we do have like identification on the property itself, like you know, like at the property, they have a good neighbor standards that are posted for anyone renting. And then also it clearly distinguishes them as approved short-term vacation rentals with the city, but not anything that I can think of specifically towards the ad. But that's definitely something that we can discuss at staff or, you know, something that we appreciate your suggestions, excuse me.
Well, thank you. It just occurred to me now, and it's not something that I had given a lot of thought to, but it seems to me that that might be appropriate and would help us in controlling those illegal units. Perhaps that certification number might be a requirement for the companies that do the advertising, so that they may know that if you run an ad for an Airbnb in Hermosa Beach, and they do not have this number, that that's an illegal business, that's an illegal Airbnb, and that you shouldn't take the ad. Maybe that would be a way of stopping the advertising for these units by requiring that. Again, just a thought, just seemed to me that this might be a relatively inexpensive way of controlling the illegal Airbnbs. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we can, why don't we? Pete, you have a, you have a question? I wanted to go ahead and open public comment. I think we have one, and then.
Hey, you're right. And we're discussing the issue.
Right. So I think Commissioner Seaman's made an excellent suggestion. Let's bring that back in deliberation and see if somebody would like to amend the draft ordinance and recommend that to council for adoption. So that being said, unless there's any other questions about other, the ordinance, the red line, and then I think I'll go ahead now and refer once again to City Attorney Donigan and say we have looked, looked at this ordinance before. We did have a split vote. One of our colleagues that was on that vote is not, not on the commission. And so when it comes back to us now, two years later, for an extension of this pilot, it's my understanding that we are not required in any way to vote the same way we did when it came before us originally, that we're now reevaluating the pilot program for an extension of two years. And so we can be yay or nay and not tied to our previous vote on this matter. Do I have that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, very well. Okay, so seeing that we've gone through a number of questions and, and started off with some interesting observations, I think I'll go ahead and open public comment for this item. Please note, the commission does not engage in a dialogue during public comment, and each speaker is limited to just three minutes. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star nine to raise your virtual hand, star six to unmute yourself. Participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute before starting your comment. We ask all speakers, please state your full name for the record. And Carlos, if you could put up the timers, so folks that are joining us via Zoom can see there are three minutes. I think that's always very helpful. We don't want people to get cut off in the middle there. And I know we were very generous earlier in the meeting, so. And I do see one hand raised, so I'll go ahead and ask you to promote Mr. Hayes to speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Hayes.
Good evening. I wrote in, and I appreciate you guys all reading my letter because I sent it in fairly late. But I appreciate that everybody read it. I'm still, I spoke about this when it came up the first time in planning. I spoke about it a couple of times in, in city council, and I'll, I'll speak at it at every meeting. I think that we need to be a no short-term rental city. I think that's kind of the intent of what the people want, and I think we need to do that. You know, I'm looking at one of the attachments, and it appears to me that there are four addresses that still have non-permitted short-term rentals in the commercial zones. And maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but you know, if, if that's the case, why are we not policing this? There, there's a property across the street from me. There's another property that I can see that have, that are on the, the, the other list, and nothing happens. They just continue to do it. We know, we know who they are. We know where they are. We find them. I don't know if they ever pay the fines. We should just make it so that if there's a short-term rental, they get shut down. I, I don't know what we, what we can do beyond this. I know I'm getting beyond the scope of what you, you guys are looking at today, but it's very frustrating. I mean, just two weeks ago, I was calling the police again on a short-term rental who's playing beer pong at eleven o'clock at night, screaming their heads off, you know, thirty feet from my head. And I just think we need to be no short-term rentals throughout the city. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, Scott. Carlos, do we have any other callers?
I'm not seeing any at the moment.
I don't see any other hands raised. Okay. Anyone on the line who wish to comment on this item? Now is the time to file star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Going once, going twice? Here ain't no one else. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Very well. Ken or Uritzi, can we have somebody please address, you know, I'm very appreciative of the fact that, Uritzi, you put together the information as supplementals and had them added back to this meeting. Those, in case my colleagues didn't see those, those were added today. And it was the short-term rental vacation activity summary, as well as the listing of addresses. And there's also a summary that Mr. Hayes was referring to where we have properties that would be allowed if they had a permit and currently do not have a permit. And we do see four properties on commercially zoned lots. Two, however, don't qualify because the parking is substandard. The other two do qualify, but in fact, don't have a permit. And interestingly enough, one of them is Seventy Tenth Street, which is an item we saw earlier. Suppose one could make the argument that having to move on and change into a boutique hotel would eliminate that short-term vacation rental issue, and they would be quite within their rights, obviously, to operate a hotel in this zone. But anything that you can add on what we're doing to work to get at least these four known properties either in the program or to stop doing it?
Yeah, absolutely. So with the, the four properties listed, that was one of the issues that code enforcement, the code enforcement team had expressed, is that while there are some listings, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're actively using the property as short-term vacation rentals. And none of the properties that they have, that were listed, were currently being used, including Seventy Tenth Street. And that was something that code enforcement is constantly monitoring and working with the property owners to verify that they are indeed not using them as short-term vacation rentals. And that was something that they verified, and they are working with code, host compliance, excuse me, to kind of close the loop on those issues where it will show on a listing, but it's not necessarily being actively used. So just kind of closing that gap and just verifying which ones are indeed being used as short-term vacation rentals. So the ones we have right now listed on that, we, they, we haven't been able to confirm that they have, have or are being used as short-term vacation rentals.
Okay. Alrighty. And then on the bottom of this, we see the code enforcement in the residential zones. Thirteen complaints, I'm assuming Mr. Hayes's is one of those, or maybe several of those. Total properties investigated, twenty-two, eighteen warning letters, five citations issued, including first, second, and third, and then cases sent to prosecution, zero. So does that mean fines have been paid? And there, can you explain a little bit more? I think Mr. Hayes asked this as well in his letter. Have we collected anything in terms of fines for these citations?
I have not. I did not check with the finance cashier's office to verify that. The code enforcement team did give me a list of where they are in the process of getting these compliant in the residential zone. And there are some that are going to hearing, and they have been given several warnings, but I don't necessarily have the details on the fines themselves.
Okay. Alrighty, that concludes my questions for right now. Do any of my colleagues have any questions, or do we want to tee it right up to deliberation? Who'd like to start? Commissioner Seaman, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I I want to say first of all that I am one hundred and ten percent against illegal short-term rentals. But at the same time, I am one hundred and ten percent for legal short-term rentals. I think that Scott, your, your suggestion that we just don't have them at all, you know, seems on the face of it reasonable, and I don't know, maybe that is the right thing to do, but I, I don't think so. I think I think that if we, if we did that, illegal short-term rentals would go on anyway, possibly get worse, because now there's no program, there's no compliance officer and so on and so forth that's looking at this. It'd be more difficult to stop it. I think also that if we throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, we'd be doing a great disservice to the city. We're a, we're a resort town. I think we could say that with all honesty. And, and people coming here to visit and enjoy the beach and our weather and our town and, and spend money in our businesses and so on and so on, eat the restaurants and so on, is an important part of our city. And, and I think short-term rentals done properly in that zone is, is an integral part of that. And I, and just to, to eliminate that as an idea altogether, because of what some people are doing that's wrong, I think would be sort of a mistake for our city. So I, I appreciate your suggestion, but I think, I think it might be a little, little more than we need to do. I think that, I think the answer would be, your problem and my problem, I think is, is with enforcement. And again, I, I think that the code enforcement people are doing as best they can with what they have right now. It's a difficult job to, to find these people and enforce the law. And that's why I'm suggesting some items, some things, some, give them some better tools to work with, like this, this compliance license or issue a number or a badge of some sort or something that you cannot advertise without it, might be a good way to start. Cut it off at the advertising so that it's easier to identify people who are conducting short-term rentals in the, in the residential zone. I completely feel for you and your problem. I, I too have lived across the street or nearby short-term rentals, and it's irritating and it's wrong, and you call and complain. There's a number of ways around the rules. And, you know, it's, 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 like I said, code enforcement is doing a good job, but they're kind of limited because there's certain things that, that they just can't, can't seem to get a handle on, and, and it's not their fault. So I think that perhaps it is time to add something to it, to put a little more teeth into it to, to get better compliance in the residential zone. But in, as far as this particular thing that we're discussing this evening, short-term rentals in the commercial zone, I am all for, one hundred percent for the continuing the program for two more years. And as Mr. Robertson said, this gives us a great opportunity to study this further and develop different ways of enforcing things in the city overall. So I, I am, I am for the extension for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Commissioner Isaac.
Thank you, Chair Rice. I would echo Commissioner Seaman's comments. So there's really two issues here. One is, is the current program worth extending? Did it get a fair shot the last couple of years? I think that it didn't. And so I would support this particular motion. The enforcement thing, I realize it's vexating. It's, it's a balance between peace and quiet for our full-time residents versus people that come to visit us that don't always behave the way that we would like them to behave. So but enforcement's not the issue here really tonight. I would like to see, you know, maybe that's a topic for a different night in terms of what we can do to help staff beef up that enforcement to ferret out the bad actors. The issue right now before us is, shall we continue this program on an experimental basis for two years in the commercial zone? I am prepared to support that particular motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dave, my weigh-in?
Yeah, I, you know, it's similar to the comments made. I mean, we're, we're
after a lot of debate, we decided to have a trial in the commercial zone and it had strong support at the city council level. I do think that again, this is not a an enactment of a law. This is an enactment of a two year pilot program that has a specifically codified sunset. So I think in that context, I do intend to support staff recommendation, which is to pass this on to the city council of their ultimate deliberation. I would encourage those, you know, on city staff to continue to work on, you know, on enforcement and monitoring. Because I looked on Airbnb and it seemed like there were even even accounting for the four, there are probably a few others that might need a a visit. So if we can figure out exactly where they are. So I intend to support staff recommendation. I have not been the most enthusiastic supporter of STBRs in general in our town. But I do think that in this, since a yes vote is warranted, and I intend to vote yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Hoffman.
I think all my fellow commissioners have expressed the same sort of anxiety over this issue that we had when it came before us the first time. And the very mixed motions, if you will, in terms of where support or lack thereof of of short term vacation rentals. And I guess I would add only that one of the persuasive factors here is that in fact, the state of California through the coastal commission is is very much in favor of this. So part of what we did was sort of a defensive strategy to minimize the impact on our community at the same time that we moved in the direction of complying with state guidelines. So but again, I don't want to to rehash this entire thing. I think as Commissioner Isaac said, the program as we conceived it never really got off the ground due to COVID and all the rest of it, that the first eighteen months basically really was not a fair trial period. So I'm in favor of extending it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I'll just wrap up by saying what is before us is this extension of pilot program. I think it should be extended. I think what we've seen is that with when permitted, we've had no complaints and no issues. So now those folks are rule followers to begin with. Obviously, we've got quite a number of permit and operational requirements as well as management requirements. And so the key for me is that seems to be working with those that comply. I'd like to add that when I was sort of surfing some of the STBR websites, I in fact did see a number of our permitted operators with a badge that said licensed and permitted in the city of Hermosa Beach. So to me, it seemed like it was it was a benefit. It was a plus. Like, don't worry, you're not gonna, you know, get caught or, you know, unless you're out of compliance with our rules. In other words, you're you're in our residence in this property legally, because we are allowed to do this because we have the proper permits. So for me, that shows that that piece is working. I think I share all of my colleagues concerned about enforcement. I think anything that we can do to enhance that, to check around and see if there's another company rather other than host compliance, to actively pursue, especially in the warmer weather months when windows and doors are open and I know you were in Hermosa Beach, so generally it's all year, but specifically in the summer when we have a lot of events in town and a lot of people traveling. Anything that we can do to be more on top of it, I think is the way I would recommend it to counsel. I like the idea that Rob has put forth. In fact, when I saw those online, I thought, oh, we must require it with a license number. So in fact, I would like to ask to see if we have support to add that to this red line ordinance and add some language, maybe in the permit and operational requirements. Or under, I'm not sure, maybe the attorney can guide us on that. Maybe the management and operations plan that states upfront, it needs to be there and that's a really easy way.
Can I speak to that? Under subsection M, we have some language that I think that addresses that, or you can tell me if you think it's enough. It says the owner or owner's authorized agents shall post the current short term vacation rental permit number, a photograph of the front of the property where the short term vacation rental is located, as well as a number of approved onsite parking spaces available in any written publication or on any website that promotes the availability or existence of a short term vacation rental. So that may very well be why you see that. And I think to me, it seems like it's covered, but you can tell me if you think you think there's some additional language to.
Do my colleagues feel like there needs to be language that says, here's what happens if it's not there? Because clearly, or some language around it needs to be right at the top of the listing so it's easily found and you need to scroll. Thank you, Ken, for pointing that out. I didn't see it when I was cruising it here live, so I appreciate you pointing that out. Rob.
Thank you for that, Chair Rice and and Ken. I appreciate what that says in section M. But it doesn't necessarily have a consequence to it. It says that they're required to show that in any ad or publication. But what happens if they don't? And and I think the enforcement of that, more severely enforcing that section would go a long way toward educating the public, let's say, that they're looking at an ad for short term rental in Hermosa, but they don't have the license number that's required by law. So there's a simple way to to do that is to enforce it by a fine or something. Besides just saying, yeah, well, you have to put it in your ad. You know, you're not supposed to have ads if you don't have it in the first place, but people are doing that anyway. So again, I just feel that some circumstance should some circumstance should be added to that.
Well, I would just say everything in the codes section, we have authority to enforce, including that.
I think I was simply going to say that I we're we're forget we're failing to separate the two issues here. The the issue of an illegal operation versus a legal operation, what we're regulating here are legal operations. And in order for this to be meaningful for those who are operating illegally, we'd have to educate the entire public on you have, if you rent one in Hermosa, it has to have this. I don't know how that happens. Rob mentioned the contractor's license. That's a state requirement. And any consumer in the state who is informed consumer would know that. I'm not sure how any consumer in the state or out of state who's looking for a short term vacation rental in Hermosa is going to know that there is a requirement that there be some kind of indication it's a legal operation. It's sort of, you know, I hate to make the analogy. It's like we're trying to regulate illegal dope dealers with the standards that we're applying to the legal dispensaries. They're two different animals here and two different situations. And I just am a little reticent to suggest that we can correct the one problem by regulating more tightly those that are, I believe Commissioner Rice said, these are the people that are the rule followers to believe to begin with. And we've had no issues with them.
I agree with that point, that the folks who are complying. I have done a fine job of it with with or without this license number appearing in their ads and so on. And you're right, we are discussing this tonight, this particular thing. But we're about to approve this ordinance that regarding this, and it just seems this might be a good way to add something to that as far as controlling those people who are doing illegal short term rentals. So if everyone doesn't agree with that, then that's fine. I understand.
Alix, does anybody have any thoughts on adding any language to make it more of a penalty? Or it does say shall post and you want to make the language, I mean, shall is required, so it's the same. To Pete's point, we're, you know, really, we are trying to do two different things here. We're trying to make it really obvious, I think, to our code enforcement and anybody looking at this ad that is looking at enforcement to know right away whether this is one of our conforming properties or whether it isn't. And we're sort of looking at that as a tool. And at the same time, I think the point I was trying to make is it might in fact be an advertising benefit for the listing person. So I don't think it would be onerous to require them to have it in a certain place and have it look a certain way. But I do hear Commissioner Hoffman's point that he has raised. And so if we'd like to just stick to the draft red line ordinance as is, the only thing I'd like to add at this point is that Commissioner Hoffman brought up that when we were originally looking at this so many years ago, really what we were trying to do is put some rules around activities that could actually happen because these was existing, not component in the C zone to begin with. So just to, I mean, sort of back to Mr. Hayes's concern or anybody else that's watching, just eliminating it then eliminates our ability to manage and control this activity where it's actually already permitted by zoning. So this was, I think, a great way to do it, to get some control over it, to manage it and operate it as a city, see a little bit of revenue to balance that, and have known entities operating in this particular way. It also helped us to satisfy some of our coastal requirements we've had on our books. I think, and Pete, you probably remember this as well, from I think the get go, then anything less than thirty day rentals in the R zones is not permitted. And it's always been that way. It's never been allowed here. So that was our that was our stance there to coastal and to anyone else looking at this is that we've never allowed it. So we've not changed anything. And we have many arguments and many other things that qualifies coastal access. Each city is quite unique. We have walk streets, we have accommodations, we have hotel rooms, we have the hostel, and now we have the short term vacation rentals. So this helps us to satisfy what we're required to do by the coastal commission. So I just want to illuminate that. This is a really important part of that. And it gives us control over something we clearly feel that we need to get more control over. So I just wanted to bring that up again. So unless any of my colleagues have any other comments, I think I hear five votes to support an extension with no amendment to the draft red line. Steve? Oh, we have to open, oh, I did a public comment. Sorry. I just looked at my list and thought, did we do that? Yes, we did. Sorry. Commissioner Isaac. Unmute, sir.
My apologies. It's a complicated business, Chair Rice. I move the resolution as written by staff to extend this trial program for or recommend to the city council extending this trial program for two years.
Second.
Robert, let me, I'm sorry, I have my head down.
Yes, Rob.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Hearing and seeing none. Carlos, can you call the world, please?
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isaac?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice. She carries. The item will be forwarded to city council.
All righty then. So that concludes section two. We're done with our public hearings. We have no hearings and now we're moving on to section four staff items. Tonight before us, we have the tri annual report for on sale alcoholic beverage conditional use permit. This is our usual receive and file for informational purposes and this report will be considered in full at our commission meeting next on November sixteen, twenty twenty one. So with that, is is there a staff report or at this point it's just information?
No, as we, as our standard practice, this is provided for information purposes only. It does provide you, you know, if you have some questions you want us to deal with before it comes back to you next month, you can certainly ask them at this point. But at this stage, we will be bringing this back for hearing at your next meeting and we'll have the representatives from the police department at the meeting as well.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions about the report and any requests for additional information? Rob, no. Pete, no. Steve, no. No. Okay. Moving on. All right.
Chair, I may indulge you for a second. I have an add on on staff items. An important announcement, and I've asked Uritzi to stay on so she could be here. Thanks, Uritzi. It's with great regret. I have another announcement to make about one of our staff people moving on and bettering their life. I'm very sad she has given us her notice and she's, you know, making a move in her career to advance her career. So I just want to express my appreciation for her four years and her great service and great work ethic. And that I will miss her, but I wanted the commission to also be aware and be able to commend her on her future endeavors and thank her for her service.
Well, thank you, Ken, for letting us know live and in the moment on a night where Uritzi literally delivered every report.
Right.
She she was working really hard, I guess. Is this your last meeting then, Uritzi?
Yeah, this is my last meeting.
Oh.
I want to go with a bang. That's why I'm like, you know what? Let me take all the reports so that I could just be on here the most I can.
Well, you did that. And obviously, we thank you for all your hard work and four years is a really good run. So we appreciate your diligence and loyalty to our city and, you know, wish you the very best in your next endeavor. I mean, obviously, I must be colleagues who are just hearing this for the first time. So if anybody else wants to to chime in. Pete?
I could, I, you know, it's interesting, Uritzi, as you were doing that earlier and I can't remember what it was. Somebody asked a question and two seconds later you were, you know, citing the code and so forth. And I don't, I mean this in the most positive way. You've grown so much in this job and the time that you've been here. This is horrible news, Ken. Thanks for ruining the whole downer. Now, I understand the Dodgers won, so I was kind of delighted. Now I think we're disappointed, Uritzi, where where I personally am really going to miss you, but I mean, the commission as a whole, you've done a fabulous job, of course. Bad job on Kenny. We can't seem to keep our staff here, but congratulations. If you're moving up, then we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Uritzi, congratulations. Good luck. I'll miss you as well.
Thank you.
Rob?
Dito. Uritzi, you've done a great job. You always have. And I'm also very sorry to see you go, but I'm also very happy for you and and I hope I wish you best of luck in life and and good luck in your new surroundings. Thank you.
Nice, Chair.
As we often say, when you're speaking forth, you know, I share the the comments of all my colleagues, but I've appreciated your help. I know that working in our community development department, you not only have to deal with public comment and all of our questions, but folks that have you know, a lot of questions about issues that are near and dear to them, which is their their home and their communities. So I appreciate your help. I wish you luck and you will be missed.
Thank you all. I'm definitely going to miss each and every one of you. It's a great pleasure. And Hermosa Beach is always going to have a warm place in my heart. So I appreciate the time that I got to work with everybody. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Well, gee, Ken, now what?
Is this just consistent with what we're hearing on the news about the great resignation? It's 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 a struggle throughout a lot of cities right now. There's other opportunities and you can't blame people for moving.
No, I mean, we're seeing in every industry, people reevaluating what's important, people wanting to be near family or just relooking at what they're doing and going in different directions and moving into different places. So see, it sounds like Uritzi is staying in the lane of planners. So hopefully, all the work she's done here helped her to get to that next level. But as we see from our colleague in the Hollywood Square, and he's right down there, there are wonderful people out there who would see Hermosa Beach as an amazing opportunity to work in an incredible coastal city that's small, unique, nimble, and has a high level of involvement and I think really tremendous commissioners. So and staff. So we know that there's great talent out there and it's really about recruiting them and getting them to come. And so I'm quite hopeful that Ken and that the team in the city manager's office will get out there and fund us someone almost as good as Uritzi, who looks forward to a new challenge. And we would obviously welcome that person to our to our team. So with that, best of luck and gratitude, Uritzi. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Ken. So I guess we're moving on to a verbal report on city council actions.
I do not have anything to report tonight. I guess one kind of silent thing that happened at the last city council meeting, they did not take up, just to review a decision you made, even though the applicant asked them to. So, and it, and they did not, and that applicant did not file an appeal either, so.
Alrighty then. That is that. Do we have any updates on major planning projects? Certainly, we can all see the crane, for those of us anyway, looking up the hill from the west, looking.
Oh, yes, yes. The one, the one I want to report you, to you on, and Christie asked me to do this as well, as well as Carlos. We, we did get our review letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development on our draft housing element. Unsurprisingly, they had quite a few comments and we are already diligently working on the response. And our plan is to bring it to your next meeting with revisions to address their responses. That hopefully we can then also move that forward to city council before the end of the year. It's important that we follow this timeline to meet the mandates of the housing element law and deadlines. So we have a lot of work to do, but the details will be in the report next month in terms of the, what the, which HCD is asking for. And it's, we've seen that they're asking for a lot of the same additional information from, with, with all the other cities that are in this process at the same time. So it's not surprising. It's kind of disappointing, but not surprising.
Okay, and remind me of the scope of what we're doing then? So we've gotten our comments back to our draft. You've taken them in, you're going through those and either answering questions or maybe amending something. But is there, what would be coming back to us in terms of recommending to council?
What will be coming back to you will be a final recommended housing element for their adoption, incorporating the comments of HCD.
And does that include the specific addresses? Is that where we're getting to that or are we still a year from now?
You know, I don't want to get too much into content, but they weren't questioning the sites as much as the analysis to back up the economic viability of site.
Okay, okay.
As well as a lot of information we had to provide about complying with fair housing laws. So those are the things we're working on.
Okay, very well. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ken on this really important item? I do see it on our tentative agenda item, so, but thank you for bringing that up in this part of the meeting. Any questions around this? Seeing none. Okay. And then Skepters, I sort of mentioned, we all know that's going on. The cranes are up, we have seen some traffic impacts on six over there. But are they still on track, on target? How's, how's that moving forward?
They're proceeding, I think they're proceeding close to schedule, back on schedule. And so, you know, we work diligently with them. We, we have an environmental compliance officer working with both us in the city Manhattan Beach that keeps them on tabs when it comes to sequels. So it's, it's generally on schedule and it's going to take some time.
I was just going to comment on the project because I was fairly close by, walked by. They've, it looks like they've gone to a new stage where the, the large plot of land that has the crane on it has obviously been underdeveloped for some time, but the smaller lot to the north, I guess you'd say, of PCH, that has been a staging area. It looks like they're now moving toward, you know, you know, aggressively developing and going forward with the construction of that as opposed to merely kind of having that as a staging area. So they have some sort of, you know, drilling or earthmoving equipment there. So FYI, that'll impact a few more residents. Although I'm, I'm sure that all of the stipulated, you know, safeguards down attenuation, et cetera, are in, are in place. But it has moved that direction. That's it.
Okeydoke. Anything else, colleagues, on this item? Seeing none. We have, we're moving on now to the tentative future agenda. We have recommendation to receive and file. Any questions about the projects for the sixteenth, including housing element? Try and LCP review four, four, four Ocean Avenue and one twenty, twenty-fifth Street, small lot exception. No questions? Do we have a motion receiving file?
Oh, moved.
Steve, very well, we have a motion and second. Any comments? Seeing none. Carlos, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we are on to commissioner items, number twelve. Does anyone have, well, actually, we have twelve A. Discussion of Senate Bill Nine, the California Housing Opportunity and Move Efficiency Home Act.
Perfect, Chair. So this one's on me tonight. I tried to keep it brief, as you can imagine, SB nine's pretty, you know, pretty, a pretty big deal. So bear with me. This, of course, is just going to be me talking very casually. So if anyone wants to interrupt me, if I say something that, you know, blows your mind, you can just stop or you can wait till the end. You know, in short, SB nine is going to require the city to allow any single-family lot to be split roughly into halves with resulting lots as small as twelve hundred square feet. And then allow up to two single-family dwellings to be developed on each of those single-family residential lots. All ministerial. So no public review, no public hearing, no discretionary review, et cetera. You know, the law only imposes kind of a handful of restrictions on that. And then, of course, narrowly allows the city to impose kind of a few more, what I kind of think are on the edges, but that's to be determined. It's, it's, it's brand new, takes, it takes effect at the, at the beginning of the year. And it, it raises a whole lot of questions that unfortunately remain unanswered. Hopefully be clarified by subsequent legislation and/or legal challenge. The roadmap for these kind of next few minutes here is I'm going to discuss the SB nine standards for the lot splits. Then the city's ability to place any additional kind of regulations on those. Next, the SB nine standards for the development of two single-family dwellings on each single-family residential lot. And then, of course, the city's ability to place additional restrictions on those projects. And then, of course, I may stop on a few of those to highlight some issues. If one really, you know, piques your interest, feel free to interrupt me at, at any time. So once again, kind of getting to the mechanics of it for lot splits. That's turning one single-family lot into two different lots without discretionary review. Each new lot must be at least twelve hundred square feet. So that's, that's, that's pretty, you know, it's pretty simple, straightforward. And they must be roughly equal. The law allows for a sixty, forty split, but, you know, you can't just siphon off twelve hundred square feet and then have five thousand on the, on the other side. And here's one, you know, particularly, at least in my, in my opinion, potentially interesting one. You know, the split can't, you know, demolish or alter affordable housing, rent-controlled housing, in, in, in anything like that, which isn't super relevant in the city. But it does say, or housing occupied by a tenant market rate or affordable in the past three years. To me, seems potentially like a lot of places. You know, however, the city doesn't really have an investigatory unit that's kind of been out there tracking tenant occupancy in the last three years. So the, the, the enforcement there or confirmation's going to be, I don't want to say dicey, but, but challenging. We've already started thinking of some potential solutions, you know, some type of, you know, the applicant swearing under penalty of perjury, a neighborhood survey, hey, who have you seen live there, et cetera, et cetera. But that's going to be one to, 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 you know, keep a, keep an eye on. And then the, the, the next factor, which to me is particularly relevant to Hermosa Beach, is that each lot split must be quote-unquote, a single-family residential zone. Why that's relevant for Hermosa Beach is it's a, with a very robust residential zones that aren't R-one. There, you know, as I believe the, the project we had tonight wasn't. And so, you know, the statute really doesn't define a single-family residential zone. My, in my humble opinion, the plain text of the law point towards, hey, that means R-one. That's what it means. These other, you know, zones allow for multi-units. That's what we're trying to get to. Further, the legislator kind of knows how to refer to multifamily or other residential zones when it wants to see the ADU law. So as of right now, without kind of future clarification and, and who knows what type of arguments we, we may see. I think it is kind of safe to, moving forward to think, okay, what, what this means is this is applicable to the R-one zone, at least in the city of Hermosa Beach. Getting back to now, one of the other factors, you know, the lot can't include any historic landmark or within designated historic district. Doesn't just mean the ones that are listed by the state. Rather, the city can, can, can do it via its process. And the original lot must have been as, must not have been established through a prior SB nine lot split. What that means is if you have a huge lot and can't keep splitting, 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 can only do it once, that's it. And then the, kind of the last one I'll, 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 I'll raise is that it says no coordination in that neither the owner nor anyone acting in concert with the owner previously subdivided in adjacent parcel through an SB nine lot split. Now, of course, you think to yourself, okay, what, what does that mean? Developer buys two properties next to each other and, you know, they can't create this eight-unit kind of compound thing. Simple, can't do that. However, SB nine doesn't define what is in concert. Does that mean they have to agree to it? Does that mean, or is it as simple as a neighbor looks at, you know, their, their neighbor and goes, oh, that's pretty cool. I want to do that. Maybe they don't even talk. Maybe a service or a contractor knocks on the doors up and down the street saying, hey, this is how you do it, et cetera. These are the things that unfortunately, where I sit today, kind of remain unresolved. And of course, you know, the, the city can, in its, in its processes, try to clarify that and, 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 and see what happens, so to speak. So those are kind of the, the standards from SB nine for the lot splits. Now, the city's ability to, you know, put additional regulation on those lot splits is, is, is pretty limited. Have to be, it has to be, can only be objective standards, can't be discretionary. And, and more importantly, those objective standards must yield to the extent that they physically preclude the construction of two units of at least eight hundred square feet. So what does that mean? That means, hey, if you, if, if a height says, hey, it can only be a single story, but there's a twenty-four hundred square foot lot, split, footing into two twelve hundred square foot lots. Each twelve hundred square foot lot is, is going to, is going to need twelve hundred square feet of, of floor area, i.e. two eight hundred one, eight hundred square foot ones. So of course, what do they have to do? Have to go up. And so that's, you know, something to, to, to keep in mind, that you can't objective standard kind of our way out of this. Parking, that can only require one off-street parking space per unit and none if it decides is within one half-mile walking distance of either a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop or one block from a car-share vehicle location. I believe those first two encompass a lot of the city, but I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Ken and Carlos in planning on that. You know, don't get me started on one block of a car-share vehicle location. You know, Ubers are by definition mobile. What does that mean? Is one driving around? Does that mean it? What does it mean where someone, you know, an Uber driver lays his or her head? Who knows? The side and rear setbacks are limited to four feet or less. But, and, and none at all may be imposed on an existing structure or on one that is constructed in the same location, in the same dimension that existed on the structure. I.e. if you have a, a lot with a structure with a less setback, you can't make a move it. You have to allow them to develop in that space. I guess one good note, nothing in SB nine precludes a front yard setback. But once again, other than those kind of physical dimensions, you can't make the front yard setback so large that you can't, can't develop. The city must prohibit non-residential use of the lots, which, once again, I guess makes sense in a sense that this is for housing. We don't want people building these kind of units and then renting them out commercially for commercial purposes, excuse me. City cannot require any right-of-way dedications or constructions of off-site improvements for the, for these SB nine projects. No correction of non-conformities on the, on the lot based off of this. And then one thing, when you first read, you think, okay, maybe this is going to, this is going to save us. The applicant must sign an affidavit stating that the owner intends to occupy one of the housing units as the owner's principal, principal place of residence for at least three years following the lot split. However, the affidavit only requires intention. And so anyone can intend to do anything at one point in time. It's pretty toothless. And I guess from a policy perspective, it makes, makes sense. We can't really force people to live there for three years. You know, health, job, family issues could come up, et cetera. The city must include the number of SB nine lot splits in the annual housing element. And then this is one that's, we're, we're still kind of wrapping, we're trying to wrap our head around it. I know myself and the director have spoken about this. It says the city may only deny in otherwise qualifying SB nine lot split if the building official finds that the resulting housing development project would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety or the physical environment and there's no feasible satisfactory mitigation. Now, why is that? No, the building officials, they don't do that. They go out there, they have the building code, they, you know, they have the factors, they, they check off the boxes, okay, you go. Here, it's going to require, I guess, a bit more, you know, yeah, teamwork, so to speak, but, you know, consulting with, with the planning department. Because now, to, to do that, there's going to be, to be this kind of unique, you know, approach of, hey, the building official needs to go out there and make written dedicated findings based off of the unique kind of case-by-case basis, which is just a very, I don't want to say odd, but just a unique thing from what I can tell in terms of the original kind of building inspector role of, you know, very, I don't want to say ministerial, but, you know, very, this is what, this is what the building code says, here's what's there, et cetera. So that's for the lot splits. I don't know if you guys want to, you want me to wait? You want to have your questions on that before I move over to the kind of the two-unit projects? I'm looking around, seeing none. I will, I will continue ahead. You know, in addition to the lot splits, SB nine requires the city to ministerially approve a two-unit development on a lot in a single-family residential zone. Once again, that's without discretionary review, no, no public hearing, nothing like that. A lot of the same kind of requirements are somewhat redundant. And so I won't get into, you know, all the nuance in terms of it must be a single-family zone. Okay, we kind of already addressed that. Lot must be located within an urbanized area, urban cluster, that's us. One that, in, this is similar to the, to the, to the lot split in that, you know, it must not involve the demolition or alteration of affordable housing, rent-controlled housing. And then, of course, that, that housing occupied by a tenant. And then one other kind of caveat there is that if it, if it does have a tenant within the past three years, you can't demo more than twenty-five percent of the existing exterior walls of an existing dwelling unit, unless the, 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 the city explicitly allows you to. Meaning that if you have a tenant, it's clear you have a tenant, you can still maybe kind of do it, be a kind of keep that, that, that existing unit as is. And then, of course, the site must not be a historic landmark, all that same stuff. And then, once again, the local standards for the, for the two-unit projects, very, very similar. All have to be objective. Must allow for at least these, you know, two at eight hundred square feet. Same parking, same, same kind of setback issues. And once again, just really the, the thrust of those is that you need to at least allow for two at eight hundred square feet. And as long as you do that, you, you, you know, you'll likely be fine. And so that kind of going back to more of a, you know, a thirty thousand square foot, thirty, thirty thousand foot view. You know, further kind of issues with this is, not issues, but requirements is that the city must prohibit short-term rentals on these. That's not, you know, this, this is all about, you know, housing, not temporary housing, not transient housing. This is about housing. So none of these are, are allowed for, for any type of short-term vacation rental use. The California Environmental Quality Act doesn't apply. Once again, ministerial, that, that building official language i- is still there. One thing to, to note is that the coastal act still does apply. So that's, you know, that, that is applicable to some areas in the city. I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't heard anything from coastal Ken in terms of how they, you know, if they're going to treat this differently or if they're going to kind of get on board with the, with the governor and kind of make this a more ministerial TBD, we shall see. And then I guess two, just kind of, you know, final points is that, you know, nothing in this bill does impact HOAs or private covenants between private parties. So in theory, if, if you guys are all out, constituents are, you know, up in arms or, or nervous about it. You know, it's not, it's not the best solution, but you should parties want to contract and say, hey, I'm not going to do it to my property. If you want to do it to your property, that, that, that would be, I think, entirely enforceable, more on the civil side. And then finally, the city can impose development impact fees and utility connection fees, which I- And then finally, the city can impose development impact fees and utility connection fees, which I believe is not the case with ADUs, so I guess that is one kind of small straw that, that, that the state legislator did throw. The city, um, I know that was a lot, as you can imagine, one decision on one aspect can kind of have a, 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 a ripple effect. I know myself and, 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 and the, and the community development department, Ken, my boss, Mike, uh, Sujo, you know, we're thinking about this, we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna attempt to get something kind of, you know, teed up. Once again, the process, of course, is gonna come through the planning commission, city council, this is something that, that you guys will get a full chance to weigh in on. And, you know, that's kind of what I have tonight, open for any questions. Um, and that's it, Chair.
Thank you, Patrick. Commissioner Hoffman? Pete, you're muted.
Patrick, right at the end there, you talked about ADUs, clarify that. I've, I've been reading things that tell me that this isn't really about two units, it's about four. To the extent that each of the two units can then have an ADU by right effectively. So that potentially a lot split would lead not to two properties, but rather to four housing units, two main residents with, each with an ADU. Correct or not?
Correct, yeah, so, 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 yes, it, it, the, this does, y- you are correct. This does not replace or stop or say the, you cannot have a JADU or an, or an ADU. This is in conjunction with it, with, once again, the ultimate goal of as many housing units as, as possible.
And I, I, I guess I, I don't know whether we're, I, I guess I bring that up because in particularly, as you mentioned, of the coastal zone. So often, that's, I assume, going to be an issue if someone has uh, an R one lot that falls within the coastal zone that happens to have on it, say, three units today, and they propose a split, I, I, again, I don't think this has been resolved. And coastal, the same way, have to replace the equal number of units. We're gonna be compelled, or the develop, the property owners would be compelled to build not just two units, but three or four, I, I don't, I don't know.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, you, you, you bring up a great point, what's the, I guess, the original lot, what's the new lot, and, and will coastal take a more holistic view of it in general? It, it really is TBD.
Rob?
Pat, um, you mentioned that if the units, uh, the existing units were occupied, uh, as low-income housing or at market rate, that you could not demolish the units themselves, is that correct?
Correct, yes, wi- wi- with a tenant within the previous three years.
So, all right, so let's say you own an apartment building, a, or a triplex, and you rent out well, I suppose it wouldn't make any difference to rent out two or three of them, whatever. And, and they're rented out, and you want to do this, you have a large lot, and you want to split it and, and build the extra units and so on and so forth, you, you're not allowed to do that because those units were rented at market rate?
Correct, yes, that, that, that is the, the, the language as stated in SB nine. Once again, however, where the, the, kind of the devil there is in the details in terms of, I guess if someone wants to be dishonest and say, I didn't have a tenant, you know, we, we're not really sure how we're gonna, you know, what's, what's the mechanism for the, for the city to kind of justify and deny that? What's the, you know, the burden of proof, so to speak, what type of investigatory, you know, activities would the city have to do to, to attempt to say, hey, yeah, you had, you know, I'll use myself as an example, Pat Donigan lived in there last year, as a tenant, he didn't own it, where'd he go, et cetera? But yes, you, you, to answer your question straight, more in a more straightforward way, that, that is what the law says, that it, 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 it cannot involve the demolition or alteration of housing occupied by a tenant market rate or affordable in the past three years.
And, and what about adding on to those units? In other words, there was the, the caveat about the twenty-five percent of an existing unit. As long, I guess, as long as you're under that twenty-five percent demolition, you could take that same tripla, excuse me, that same triplex and add on to that. Um, even if they weren't actually an, another unit, but making those units larger, you could still do that under this.
Correct, exactly, yeah, as long as the twenty-five percent of those exterior walls, if that standard wasn't, you know, wasn't exceeded, then yes, you could, you could pursue this.
But you couldn't, you couldn't, uh, well, evict the tenant in order to do that addition?
Correct, that is, that, that is the, from my reading, that is the, of that law. They don't want a mass eviction to then kind of rebuild everything.
Right, but if you were to tell the tenant that I'm, I'm gonna do this, and they want to believe that certainly they could do that, of course, you then that's not the same thing as evicting them, and so therefore, that's a way around that particular rule, I, I would guess. Okay. Okay, so is there any organized, um, effort, uh, on the part of, uh, South Bay cities or California cities to oppose this law? That, that you know?
Yes, I mean, there were, yeah, there was a pretty robust, you know, le- letter-writing campaign. And, you know, I guess I'll ta- take this just by opinion, so take it for what it's worth. You know, from, from, from the purely legal side, that the way that the, the, you know, the, the courts have kind of genuflected to, to the state's reasoning and purpose for more housing. It, it's to me potentially unlikely that a pure legal challenge i- is gonna be the most successful route, i.e. hey, this is an invasion of police power, local control, et cetera. It'll likely come in the, in the form of hopefully clarifying or different, you know, modifying legislation. Um, and, and to that degree, yes, I mean, all cities kind of, you know, are, are very apprehensive, so to speak, about this, I guess, how strong and, and, and fervent that is, is likely gonna be a waiting game depending on the impacts of this. As you can imagine, I think some cities are gonna, I don't want to say have it much worse, but it's gonna be much more impactful in some cities based on the other. And so while there's been somewhat of a, of a, of a, of a fervor at, at the outset, it's, it is somewhat of a wait-and-see game, at least, at least for, for the near term.
Right, so other than at the polls and voting, or perhaps succeeding from the state, it's kind of not gonna happen, but, um, there's really no other way around this, we have to comply with this, like so many of the other things we've looked at recently. Okay, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it.
And then, just, oh, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Um, a clarification in response to Commissioner Hoffman's question, you made it, or maybe I misunderstood, it sounded like they could do ADUs and an SB nine project? I thought the law was, had a narrow exception, that if you do an SB nine project, then the city does not have to allow ADUs.
No, 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 go ahead. I, I believe my, my internet, or maybe it was yours, kind of just cut out, if everyone heard you, I apologize, I'm not trying to to shirk the question. So, so what you're saying is that if, I mean, no, so my, my reading of it, and once again, I guess I can, I can clarify this, is that while there's some impact on, 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 on ADUs, it's not an either-or. In theory, you could have some level of SB nine and an ADU. Now, you may be limited in terms of the full SB nine, i.e. lot split, and then two units on each, and then ADU for, for every one. Um, but, but there is still some interplay and, and, and connection between ADU and, and, and SB nine. Um, but once again, I, I will triple-check that, and, and, and Commissioner Hoffman, I will, I will follow up with you to make sure that.
No, I appreciate that. I think Ken's just trying to get even with me for suggesting he can't keep his staff. But Ken, I, you know, I, I've obviously been trying to follow this, there was a study done uh, at Cal by their housing institute, I forget the name of it, where they tried to look at the total impact of this across the state. It's, turns out to be much smaller than one might guess, what they're estimating based on the finances and so forth. But again, my problem with their study is that their study was done statewide, in the same way that this bill has been implemented statewide. And what would occur in Sacramento has almost nothing to do what occurs in the South Bay housing market, at least in the beach cities. But in their calculations, I know for the city of Sacramento, they did go through and look at the size of the lots to calculate how many R one lots, you know, blah, 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 they could potentially be split. But then in terms of calculating how many housing units might result from that, they did include as a maximum each of the new units having an ADU with it. Now, whether that was a JDU or an ADU, I'm not sure. But it, it's, it's, you know, the, and, and of course, part of this is politically motivated, as Rob has suggested. The goal here is to increase homeownership in the state. And so the, the greater the number that you can come up with as the potential outcome of this, I suppose, the better the legislation looks. And so as they're doing the calculations, I think they're trying to kind of imply, or add into that, but, but Patrick, I would love to have some sort of definitive resolution of, of that question and, and see what you guys think. And, and I think the other part of this, I think everybody appreciates, some of these things are only gonna be resolved through litigation eventually. Like everything in zoning.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, a couple of questions to comment, I, um, Pete, I do this as a hobby, Pete, for a living, but I think the goal is to increase housing units, not necessarily homeownership. Although, I guess at the end of the day, it doesn't matter.
No, actually, it, it's homeownership, because if you're simply splitting these into rental units, you're increasing those, but you're not doing anything to affect the price of the housing market, and the idea, at least in theory, the rationale that's given is that this is going to drive down the price by increasing the supply. If they're purchased as speculative rental units that wouldn't accomplish that goal. And by the way, I'm not defending this legislation.
Oh, I know, I know.
In terms of creating a rationale, that's the only rationale that, that actually makes sense. And certainly in terms of some of the desires to increase equity and income and so forth, it's only through homeownership that would occur.
Okay, I appreciate, appreciate the comment, yeah, I mean, it does. It can increase supply, it does, as we know, demand, demand can increase too, especially on days like today with the nice weather and a triumphant Dodger team. I wanted to ask, um, Pat, a question specific to, you know, what we see next, I mean, that you, you laid out a lot there, I'm a little better of a reader than a listener, maybe in terms of some of this detail, but what will we see next, either from you or Ken's group, or Suzha, or, I mean, are we gonna see you know, changes to our code and zoning marching through this commission here in the next three to six months, or are we gonna have a couple of property owners show up and with a plan to subdivide something, say, this is how we interpret the law, and we want approval today, I mean, what's the sort of you know, substance and cadence of how this is gonna move?
Yeah, so I mean. Uh, yeah, so I mean, i- i- it likely, it's obviously gonna have to be, be quick. Um, it's, it's, this, this, this pro, this bill does take in, you know, January one, twenty twenty-two. And, and, you know, typically, it would, it would likely be ma- maybe some of those objective standards first in terms of, hey, let's just make sure we at the very least have some, you know, s- some standards, and then, you know, or, I mean, but once again, that's really gonna be kind of determined by, by you all. If we, if we bring objective standards and, 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 and you guys as the policy decision-makers of the city say this isn't strong enough, we want to do X, Y, and Z, or we want to do A, B, and C, you know, that, that's, that, that, that's gonna kind of be the, 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 the direction there. Um, and, and of course, you know, the next time this does come, come before you, um, it, of course, will, there'll be a written report, written, you know, analysis, things like that. And then, and then we are kind of preparing more of a, of a, of an in-depth memo, um, which will, which we should be able to, to, to get circulated in terms of, you know, kind of basically putting into words of kind of what, what I just said. So at least that's, that, that's kind of from where I sit. Now, of course, you know, Ken and, and Suja, they kind of may have, you know, not different feelings, I think everyone's kind of on, on the same boat, but that's, those are kind of my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
All right, very well, hearing none from my colleagues, thank you, Patrick, for taking us through this new legislation, the challenges, and then sort of laying out the roadmap for what we may be seeing pretty quickly and imagining November, so it goes to council in December. And then it's on the books for January, if, if we move to do anything, so thank you for that, much appreciated, and thank you for responding to Commissioner Iazan's request that this item be added. So we do appreciate that, and your responsiveness and that very comprehensive review, uh, very particular and technical legislation. And so, uh, I think we now move on to adjournment, unless any of my colleagues has anything else. Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Second, on favor. Thank you, everybody, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, thank you, Steph.